It's Tuesday, June 9th, 2020. It's 5:30 and we are having a work session this evening. First thing on our agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. So if you can, stand for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first item, 2021 budget discussion and general fund. And Jason Hilders is our presenter this evening, our deputy city manager. Go ahead, Jason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, once again, we're here to talk about the 2021 budget. We have a number of items to cover this evening, so I'll jump right in. I just wanted to remind the commissioners of the mission. When you open our budget book, it's one of the first things you say and see and read. Obviously, to sustain order and safety and health and preserving our natural environment and our economic vitality. We obviously have dedicated employees providing those services, maintaining our infrastructure, implementing programs and development projects throughout the community. Those folks are 450 strong, full-time, 1,200 overall when you add part-time and exempt. And I don't want to miss the opportunity to highlight just how important they are to everything we do. A lot of what you all get to consider on a Tuesday night is a fraction of what our folks do throughout the year. So it requires revenue to fulfill that mission, as you well know. We have $163 million budget in 2020. Our general fund is $31 million. Those are significant numbers, and there's a significant amount of work that it takes to deliver that much in service. Our revenues have been flat or declining, as we've covered in past work sessions. For the past four years, we've seen very little to any new revenues. We've been adjusting internally to that flat revenue stream. We've done a lot of things over the last four years, a lot of things that have come at the suggestion of even the commissioners. And we've reached a point now where our options are narrowing. We can look at ways to try to raise revenues. We've explored user fees last year. We looked at a sales tax, obviously, tried to get the .3 passed last November. That failed by 414 individual voters. Property taxes, always a tough discussion. Cutting services, not something we've entertained a whole lot of. We've absorbed a lot of revenues falling short over the last four years. Had a couple different stints of hiring freezes. Well, obviously, we're in one now. We had one in 18 as well, adjusting to revenues, just not meeting projections. Transferring funds, another topic and source that can generate some consternation and some folks not extremely pleased with transferring money out of, let's say, our utilities or out of special street highway into the general fund to help offset some of those gaps. So none of these come easily. There is not an easy button with budgeting. We all know that. And this is really just to serve as a reminder of how difficult it could be. We're looking for sustainable approaches moving forward. We feel like, again, we have filled that gap for the last four years. We've got some frustration building up within the organization, whether it's on the personnel side, the equipment side, the maintenance of our buildings, our facilities that is being deferred. We have a lot of things that are just keep getting pushed off to tomorrow, what we feel like needs to be addressed today. So that decision-making, that direction, we're looking for sustainable approaches here and where we can steer that ship. That strategy is, it builds into that strategic plan that we talked about and how we can get this moving in a direction that the community, the commission and the organization can support. And yes, I've taken a little bit of heat internally about the iceberg ahead scenario, just to try to bring some levity to the conversation. But we do see something in the future that is daunting. And if we keep putting off expenditures that need to take place, whether it's on the personnel side, on the equipment, on the facilities, we're going to stress and we're going to stress to the point where, I'm sure you've heard of the term white elephant, when something gets so expensive to replace that you actually built something new. And those occur sometimes in government. And we're not alone in that. That happens at the school district. That happens at the county. That happens even at the university. But we would rather take an incremental approach and keep up with what we have and how we're managing that. We also have to look to our cash balances, which you've heard me talk about the last couple sessions now. They're low. Our debt on the horizon is high. And our internal ops, obviously, still having those same issues. 2021, and this is where, I know we've talked about a couple sessions ago, just where do we put our finger on what we anticipate for '21? I ran four scenarios here for you in terms of just getting enough revenue to equal where we were in '19, where we budgeted in '20. We know the budgeted '20 revenues are not going to come in. So if we go back to '19 and look at that $31 million, even a 5% drop from that '19 or anticipated '20 stream is a $1.5 million impact. And that's across the board. So that's looking at franchise fees that we know will be difficult to reach levels of '19 if we don't get all the students to come back, if we see any drops in the use of the community by our visitors. We know our sales tax, our transient guest tax, all impacted by our economy. And I would remind you, we have a poll factor in Manhattan of 1.3. So of the billion dollars in sales that are deducted in the community on an annual basis, 25% of that comes from people who don't live here. Meaning, we attract a substantial number of people into Manhattan for K-State-related events, for community-related events. We draw people in from the region to shop. And those things become in jeopardy when we start talking about things being shortened or another round of COVID and public official stay-at-home orders. Those things could impact us next year. And this revenue shortfall is trying to capture that in some way, shape or form. As you'll see later, the 5% is essentially what I've used along with some expenditures that we know we're going to need to make in '21. That could easily go to 10%, but I don't want to go too extreme and create some unsurmountable type of scenario. So we're going to start with 5% and we'll go from there. As I mentioned, 2021's got some challenges. We've got some personnel issues that we need to address immediately, especially in our finance department. It's part of the 2018, and you could even go back a few years prior to that, some key hires and things that have just been difficult to replace. We've been somewhat limited by our budgeted amounts and salaries and recruitment. It's part of the reason we hired AGH to help us look at our organization and get a better feel for what should we be staffed at? How much should our budget be reflecting in a community our size? And we hired AGH out of Wichita, and they really looked at other municipalities in Kansas to look at how their finance departments are arranged, how they're set up, the number of people that work in them, the functions and the roles and the capacities that each of them have. I will be blunt with you this evening. We have people doing two, if not three, jobs currently. They are working tirelessly. They are consistently sending us emails at midnight and at 2:00 a.m. They cannot keep up with the demand. And when you look at $163 million rolling through your organization in one shape or form, whether or not it's in revenue or it's an expenditure, it all goes through our finance department. Just five years ago, that number was about $112 million. And we've increased $50 million in terms of just revenues and expenditures that run through our organization. And our finance department has not grown. In fact, it's probably decreased. HR can be a very similar observation. Prior to our recent HR director taking over, I think we had a total of five individuals in HR. We had five individuals in HR 15 years ago. And things have just become so much more complex for both those departments. They provide service to the entire organization, and they're stressed at this point. And they need to grow and provide more service for the organization. The three rec centers are in the Park and Rec number, so we have some individuals we need to hire. We are moving people out of City Hall into those facilities that are existing staff members. We're actually moving two into the Anthony Rec Center that exists here and two more that exist in City Hall into Eisenhower. That will bring down our overall operating expenditures that are new. So we'll use those folks in the same capacity they have, but they'll also serve at the facility. So that'll help. But we still have some activity leaders and some part-time people to keep those facilities open in the evenings and weekends as we move forward. All told, the general fund impact on that personnel side is 450K. The 27th pay period is another factor for 2021. It just so happens, the first Friday payday in 2021 is January 1st. And when that happens, it kicks in a calendar issue that you have 27 pay periods. We've experienced it before. K-State's experienced it. Riley County's experienced it. And you typically budget, obviously, in advance and you take care of it. Some entities actually save money along the way and build it up, and then they're ready for that to happen. Every five to seven years, it kicks in. That's an issue for us, obviously, this year, $680,000 in the general fund. Strategic plan, we keep talking about it. We know we've got tough decisions on the horizon. Even today, Ron and I were talking about a strategic plan that involved kind of that economic development approach and how we could possibly roll that in. But we need that conversation to happen in the community so we can get a sense of what pace we're moving forward and just what that entails in terms of, you know, a renewal, a replacement, what type of sales tax? When does that occur? What's it going to be used for? But then on the strategic plan side, again, it's just back into the organization, looking at all nine departments, how they function, where our priorities are, and creating those tiers so we know where our critical functions are, our essential functions, and then what's more discretionary for the organization and the commission. So we got 1.2 million in totality, just over 2 mils by way of impact on our 2021 budget challenges in the general fund. Our cash balances, again, I'll just go through this quickly. I touched on this with you all before. There's some real concerns about the levels of our cash balances. We have about 7.5% in the general fund, which is around $3 million. If you go to GFOA, they highly recommend at least two months of operating. And then they go into other categories suggesting you even have more if you're reliant on sales tax, if you're relying on federal and state money, which we are, and if you're susceptible to natural disasters and tornadoes and floods. Our flood experience has been very intense lately, over the last decade. Several instances on Wildcat Creek and then last year, obviously, within an inch or two of the spill gates at Tuttle Creek Reservoir, which would have clearly impacted a large portion of our community for a long period of time. And the amount of resources we would have had to dedicate it to the Northview area, northeast part of Manhattan, had that went over the spill gates or we had to open the spill gates to keep it from going over, we would have spent days upon weeks and possibly even months dealing with flooded areas. That's not the type of flood that was a flash that'll come up and go down. It would have been continuous with the CFS coming out of that lake for a long period of time. So we've come to that conclusion, along with the RCPD exposure of 16 million annually. Eight to 11.75 million would be more appropriate for our budget. Just by way of comparison, I think I've thrown this out there before. Lawrence has a general fund of 80 million, and they have a cash balance of 20 million. It's right at 1/4 of their overall budget. And that's isolated in that general fund, and it's there really to be able to react and be able to, in times like these, in pandemics and floods and tornadoes, and when sales tax go and the economy drops, you have a secure funding source that you can rely on when you need it. It's also a great indicator for your bonds and your notes. When you go to sale, they're constantly looking at that cash balance. And they want security in those balances to give them comfort when they loan us money to do our projects. Internal challenges, I alluded to this. Our finance department is fractured. I about wrote broke. But I didn't want the headline in the paper to say that the city's broke. We're not broke. We're just fractured by way of staffing, overworked and distressed right now. There are four people that are being suggested by our consultants that need to be added to the organization in order to work through everything that is expected from the finance department. We have two vacancies right now that need to be filled as well, including the director along with a staff accountant. There are four additional positions that they have identified that a community our size, an organization dealing with as much as we're dealing with, we need to have on staff. We were late in 2017 with our audit. We have just finished our 2018 audit. Our 2019 audit is trying to be on schedule, which means it would basically be wrapped up in September or October. And that just kind of gives you an indicator. It's June, and we just finished the '18 audit. That's how far behind we get. And when we get that far behind, rating agencies, potential bond buyers, pay attention. And it's a clear indicator that you don't have enough staff to do what's necessary. We used to be an organization that took a lot of pride in GFOA awards. You can look in the cabinet, out in the foyer of the commission room, and there are several. They stopped coming in in 2016. And it's just been a rough go for the last four years for our staff, keeping up with what's necessary. Financial software, more time I'm spending in finance, trying to get my arms around what this is and how we can come out of it. We had a 1990's financial operating system. It is very difficult for other departments to advance themselves because it is very hard to tie back into our central nervous system as an organization. Some of the complaints even that come from commissioners about why can't we do this? I know Commissioner Butler gets very frustrated with how many letters he gets for his pet or his backflow preventer. But it is integrated into that 1990's system, and it's difficult to make changes really anywhere without going through that system. It functions. It plays a role, but it really hamstrings us in other departments. We have a number of departments that have gone and done things that have been very difficult to integrate back into our system, which creates even more work for our finance department. They create a number of spreadsheets that end up having to integrate itself back into our operating system because the software that was bought by Code or the software that was bought by Park and Rec doesn't easily transfer back in to the general ledger of the city. It just makes it that much more challenging for our finance staff. They're out trying to work with every one of our departments who are purchasing these softwares because it is such a labor-intensive process to get that information back into our mainframe. It's a $2 million one. I asked AGH this week, and I had $1 million in the memo originally, and they said, "It's actually closer to two to replace that now." She said, "Our consultant said, you know, it might be one and a half to two, but it gets more expensive every year." And they even recommended we don't do it until we staff back up appropriately because it puts such a stress on the organization, especially the finance department, to make that kind of change. We handle a lot of business. We are super accommodating, super accommodating. We bend over backwards for a lot of organizations and entities that use our expertise, use our abilities and our willingness. We handle a lot of business that involves a lot of entities in this community. And so much of it, it comes back to our services. Our finance department, our HR department and our legal department and CMO in our clerk's office deal with so much paperwork and process relative to things that aren't even the services that we provide. If you just look at any of those examples, whether it's the Housing Authority, the NPO, the library, PD, Chamber, K-State, all the vendors that we deal with in Riley County, there's so much information and there's so much process that we get involved with to accommodate a lot of services that aren't necessarily directly provided by the city. And those become very burdensome. And we have started to take a look at how can we move some of these things around to alleviate our staff and the stress that it creates. It's overwhelming at times how much we've taken on over the last 10, 15 years. Again, trying to be a good neighbor and trying to accommodate what's going on in the community. We have a multimillion-dollar operation. We've got an organization that's stressed. I know you've heard this from me several times. Our OEI efforts, our department heads were in front of you at the end of January, expressing some of their challenges. The cuts that we've had to absorb the last four years have been well beyond, obviously, the revenue we're bringing in that are flat and declining. Little to no CIP in the general fund by way of just having all, the majority of our departments just dealing with older equipment, older software, hardware. And it's starting to stack up and become a little bit challenging for everybody. So as I identified, 1.2 million in city ops is our challenge moving forward. Just at a 5% reduction, we got one and a half million. So our approach at this point is trying to come up with $2.7 million. And just how do we do that? This graphic is just trying to give you an impression of between the combination of these three, we have to come up with that $2.7 million. Services, to me, turns into more of a prioritization. What are we doing today that is no longer a high enough priority to continue? If raising taxes just isn't in the cards, we're going to have to look there really hard. We obviously make a commitment to our core services, and those would be difficult to scale back without really impacting a lot of services and the amenities and the regulations. Some of these things are mandated. There's not a lot of wiggle room at the airport. There's not a lot of wiggle at fire or wastewater or water. Public Works uses a variety of sources and revenues to do what they do, including a sales tax that passed a few years ago, 6040, pretty overwhelmingly in support of us being out there fixing streets. I've been walking by Plymouth and Kimball for the last two, three weeks. North of Kimball, the entire street has been redone by a contractor we hired. They've done an excellent job, and I'm sure that neighborhood will appreciate it. We're also in many neighborhoods in Northview and throughout the community, replacing those streets that are in great need of being replaced. And then our commitment to our support services. These departments grow slower than the other ones over the years. We don't add a lot of people here, but we've reached a point where we need to. We really do. And it's starting to impact us on the finance side by way of even marketing and selling our notes and our debt. So where to cut? I bring up Park and Rec, not because I think that's where we necessarily have to go, but I do want to show you everything we consider has, mostly everything we consider, has revenue streams. So this graphic is really intended to show you just how difficult it is to reach $2.7 million in cuts because once you take away the revenue from the expenditures, you really have to take large chunks if you're just going to isolate this department. Right? This is just purely for example purposes, but you could eliminate some facilities entirely, close them down completely and only save $400,000. There's one, two, three, four examples of that. And when you need $2.7 million, all the 400,000s could come off the board, and you'd still need to make cuts. That'd only be about 1.6 million. And you'd need to find another million. So it's substantial. The types of cuts that we're talking about will impact a lot of services that are provided in the community and have been for a long time. But again, this is just example purposes, try to give you a flavor for what it means to actually cut services by that amount of money. Just reiterating, been plugging holes for a while. It's stressing the organization. We've been expected to still provide a high level of service and have been taking in less revenue to do so. Typically, I would say, in a healthy year, you know, we're seeing 2% to 3% increases across the board in our operations. And as I've mentioned before, a $31 million general fund, that's $1 million out of the gate every year just to cover additional costs for gas, for electricity, for contractual services, personnel, commodities, all the line items that you see in our operating budgets. It's $1 million additional every year. I appreciated Commissioner McKee's comments over the years of, you know, we're over a mil every year if revenues are flat just to pay our people. And he was right. That's the type of discussion you got to have every year. To come with a consistent no property tax increase or no other revenue stream increases, then you're talking about how do you cut $1 million in order to keep your 2% to 3% growth rate? That, you know, from a governmental perspective, that incremental approach just seems more tolerable than holding off for three, four years and then coming with an 8% to 12% increase and not going over as well. Multiple years of little to no gain in revenues. As I mentioned before, a lot of challenges internally. This is just kind of a repeat of those challenges. Mayor, you had asked, what is the valuation in Manhattan and how does it split between residential and commercial? There are $3.8 billion worth of property in Manhattan that is taxable. There's another $3.3 billion that's not taxable. That's our big university right in the middle of the community. But that $3.8 billion breaks down to $3.2 billion, which is basically our residential. And there are over 12,000 units in this community that make up 85% of the valuation. And there are over 12,000 units in this community that make up 85% of the valuation. Commercial, about 571 million and it's about 15%. The strange thing about Kansas is when you go to tax someone, residential gets taxed at 11 and a half percent and commercial gets taxed at 25%. So the actual tax revenue that you all get to deal with every year is more of a two-thirds, one-third split than it is 8515. So commercial makes up almost twice as well, a little over twice that number by way of tax value and what you get for revenues. So valuation, just from an appraisal standpoint, is 8515, but when you pay your taxes, it's basically 66, 33 because they're taxed at a higher level. Just again, you've seen this slide, kind of breaks down that mil levy for that $200,000 home, one mil increase, six cents a day, 23 bucks a year generates almost $600,000 in revenue for the city. Commercial property, same breakdown per mil, 125 annually, 34 cents a day. And that, again, that same mil generates 600 grand for us to operate with. So this evening, looking for feedback on the 2.7 million. Can't really continue to rely on the general fund to provide the same level of service without that increase in revenue or a reduction in service or a combination thereof. We kind of lay out percentages. I've created a slide here that wasn't in your packet. I generated it today, but the, the A column is the same. So if you, if you said, basically let's go a third, third and a third, you'd have to come down here to service cuts right around 900,000, 900,000, 900,000 from all three sources. You can run it all the way out to the right and look at 75% coming from cuts to services, 25% in transfers. And that's just over 2,000,675. There's a lot of different scenarios here, some of which I'm not sure I could actually even ask you to do, which is 50%. Our tax lid would probably keep us from raising it that much. I think our tax lid only allow us to raise property taxes by a million dollars at this point. So that scenario would be, couldn't actually occur. But I wanted to show you that you're, you're probably going to have to stay below 50% on the property tax, if that's even what you wanted to do. But the 25s and the 33s would fit for the, the property taxes if you wanted to go there. But the other, the other scenarios there, just kind of trying to give you a flavor for this type of direction we're looking for this evening. So we can go start building these scenarios and look at the different departmental cuts and bring those back later in the budget process. I'll come back to this. I'm almost done. Path forward, obviously June to July, June to August will give us time to prepare all those reductions or revenue adjustments. We may need some legislative meetings in June and July to talk about some of these things because our, our other work session dates are pretty full. Outside agencies on the 23rd, we have seven different groups presenting to you. Try to get that knocked out in an hour and a half, two hours. But your social services, your special alcohol, ABA, DMI, ATA, library will all be there that evening to make presentations. On the 14th of July, you got the chamber, CBB, EcoDevo presentations along, then the utilities on July 28th, and then the two meetings in August, which are typically our hearing on the fourth and first reading and then second reading on the 18th of August. So happy to answer questions, comments, direction of feedback could be appreciated. If you can wrap your, your mind around some percentages of where you'd like to see us go, feedback in that direction would be much appreciated. We've had a lot of meetings with departments. I've got a decent feel for our capacity internally, but trying to get that, that sense from you all tonight.
I have a basic question. All right. Jason, this is Aaron. I was just wondering, so you talk about the incremental nature of how we kind of would like to see things go and how maybe things have gone, but and also reflecting on the Commissioner McKee's comments about the city requiring a mil basically to pay staff, that kind of, that happens every year. What is the reasoning behind what we heard of not too long ago about the property tax doubling in the last, you know, decade or that doesn't seem incremental?
So the, the property tax levy that was identified as doubling is the levy in the general fund. So that's not the total levy. Manhattan's levy has, has not doubled in that five-year period. That's just the levy that has been supporting the general fund, which has been indicative of other revenue streams in the general fund being basically flat or even possibly declining. We lost revenue in Muni Court. We've lost revenue in franchise fees. Sales tax have, have flattened, if not dipped a few years. 18 is the best year I can give you is, is it didn't, we didn't even meet projections in 18. You gotta remember a budgeted amount versus an actual in a given year creates situation for us internally that can be very negative. You can look year to year and see a revenue stream be the same, but if we budgeted a larger number in sales tax and it didn't come in at the budgeted number, but it came in at the number that was an actual for the year prior, that puts us in a hole. That puts us in the hole, the difference between what was budgeted and what you generated. So when we talked about that levy doubling, it was the general fund mil levy that went from 1.9
Where's those shoes at?
To 3.8.
Rob.
Rob, I think your audio's on, bud. Does that make sense, Aaron?
Yeah, so the burden, the, the general mil levy overall was not doubled, of course, but the, the burden on the property tax was doubled to make up for losses in other areas. So the impact on the property owner feels like it's doubled and it has in reality, but nothing has changed other than the loss in other areas.
Yeah. And when you want to talk about the, the tax burden in Manhattan, now you're throwing in other mil levies from the county, the school district, the city. So that, that mil levy total, which is 156 mil, has not doubled in five years, hasn't doubled in 10 years. I mean, when you look at that growth over time, what we showed you that did reflect a doubling was the mil levy in the general fund.
Okay, that, I, I'm going to be quiet. That answers, I just wanted to know some basics on that. I'll comment after I hear more.
The incremental approach that I suggested would be much more tolerable. From 2000 to 2015, it occurred in sales tax. I went back and looked at 2000 to 2015, the amount of sales tax we budgeted and the amount of sales tax we received. We had years with far less revenue to speak of where sales tax outpaced our budgeted amount by over a million dollars. And today, if we would just have that million dollars, our conversation for the last three years, if we would have had that million dollars, would not be the same today. So that's where Manhattan has had the shift and it's, it's a, it's a burr in people's saddle that we're even talking as much about property taxes as we are this year or have been for the last couple of years because our sales tax are flat and we relied on that source of revenue for years to really make up the difference, allow for the growth, allow us to pay our people and grow in areas that we're being pressured to grow by way of just providing more services, covering more lane miles, expanding the community and subdivisions. It, it's not as if you build a subdivision and then you don't have to go back for 20 years. There are a lot of issues that occur and sometimes you put something in brand new and, and it, it doesn't work like you thought it was going to work. I'm just, it's just more responsibility, more people, more land area, more acreage, more lane miles, that much more to do by way of city services.
Hey, Jason, can we put this back on gallery? I can't see the other commissioners and we don't have a little raise your hand button on here. Thank you. Mark did want to say something, but I just wanted to say, I think I heard Rich Vargo, just for information's sake, he mentioned one mil equals 669,000. Is that accurate?
In the county, it probably does because they have more valuation than the city.
So in the city it is 500?
585,000.
585,000. Okay, go ahead, Mark.
I forgot what I was going to ask. Oh, on the, the transfers from funds, besides water, sewer, what, what are the other options there? Just so we have a list.
And I can, I can send that to you. There are
Is it 10 of them or is it just four?
Oh, there's more than, more than 10. It's probably closer to 20 or 25.
Where's the, where's the big money?
It's, it's water. EcoDevo has a healthy balance. Water has a healthy balance. I'll pull it up, but it's about 35 million in total.
Okay. That, that's enough question for now. If we can, someone else wants to weigh in and then we can talk some more in a bit.
Yeah, I have a few, but other commissioners first. More discussion? Well, okay, well, I'll add a few comments. I'm sure there are more, more items to discuss here. Since we are still at the beginning phases of this discussion, you talked about hiring staff for finance and human resources. So a couple of those positions are through attrition. So Bernie's position and you said somebody else's. So two positions that you would have hired just to fill in those spots and then two additional positions. Is that what I'm hearing?
So there are two positions today that are budgeted, but not filled. There are four positions in addition to those two that have been identified by AGH as necessary for an organization of our size to operate, a finance department that would need to be hired.
Okay. And is that the same in HR? How many were budgeted for and how many are recommended?
HR is more of a budget reflection of getting an assistant HR director hired as well as one additional staff to come on and help. HR handles risk. HR handles all our health benefits. HR handles all our onboarding and everything that deals with pay from a Fair Labor Standards Act, all the equal opportunity rules. There, there's, there's so much rules, there's so many rules and regulations surrounding hiring people, keeping them employed, how you treat them. That industry has just grown dramatically in, in the last 10 years. And training, we look in-house for a lot of training because it is so expensive to go out of house. So we've been talking about developing our own to save on that expense. But yeah, that, those are the areas of growth that are necessary in HR as well.
Okay. And you mentioned our audit being late. I was, I, I was not aware that we've been late or we, we, I remember one year when we were late or because of one agency, but has that been consistent? Is that what you said in the past three or four years?
Yeah, our 17 audit was late. Our 18 audit just, just got done. And our 19 audit is, it's stressing the organization. We're, we're trying to get it done on time. And again, we've hired AGH to specifically provide resources to us to help with that. Burbick Treyhand is our auditor. AGH does a similar type of service, but they're not our auditor. But they do provide service to communities like ours that are stressed in that environment. Burbick and Treyhand is our formal auditors. Barney's used to be our auditors, but 17, we were, we were late and in 18, obviously. To, to be quite frank, we will probably not be back on track from an auditing standpoint until 2022. Because of the hirings we need to undertake, we are trying to adjust what it is we need to do from an auditing perspective. If you're going to go after GFOA awards, you gotta meet a certain level. We haven't met that level in three or four years. We've made a decision for the next three years, we probably, two to three years, we, we probably won't reach that level either. So there are documents like our comprehensive annual financial report that we probably won't do because we're not obligated to do it, but to meet the standard, to be at a level that we expect, the department has expected in the past, the staffing, technology, a number of things have to occur before we can even set that as a goal in our finance department.
So I, I just wanted to clarify, you had Barney's for many years. So did we start being delayed the year that Barney stepped away from, that, that contract dissolved?
No, it's, it's really not the auditor that is the issue. We lost our controller back in 2012 when she moved on. And then 2013, our assistant director of finance at the time, along with our controller that replaced our old one, picked up a lot of slack and kept this thing rolling. They, it just ran out of momentum and resources come 2017. They couldn't keep up. There's so much about an audit that is done internally. Your auditors show up and expect a high level of documentation to be ready for them to review. It started to struggle in 16 a little bit, but you can see in the management letters that were presented to the commission in 17, in 18, and soon to be from 19. Those management letters highlighted staffing shortages. Those management letters highlighted separation of duties because when you don't have enough people in your department, you can't keep critical information from crossing the desk of all those involved. So we, yeah, we've had some, we continue to have these issues and it's, it's not as if it just, you know, one day dropped on us, oh, you've got a problem incrementally over time, but once you get behind the eight ball, and again, 18 was a horrible year. We had internally looked for 1.2 million dollars in savings because our revenues were short. So that wasn't the year for us to charge into the room and say, hey, we need more people last year and again this year. We're, we're not growing. We're, we're, our, our revenues are not increasing. It just makes it harder, harder and more difficult to, to hire people moving forward. But again, I, I don't come to you this evening with this message lightly. This is, this is serious and it, it has to happen. So, I mean, if, if the message is no new taxes and no transfers, we have to cut in order to get finance and HR where they need to be. We have to.
Right. Well, I'm only talking about transfers, but not so much as the tax increases, but I will let other commissioners speak before I dominate here or take over the whole thing. Linda Nguyen, any comments or from Mark and Aaron also?
I have a couple of questions because each point you make is valuable. Are there any major projects that we don't have to have next year? that we don't have to have next year that we can look at to help make up this revenue to make our current uh core, I guess I would call it, whole? Um, I don't know. I, I remember, and I have a uh, you'll remember this. That spreadsheet, and it stopped at the end of June this year and doesn't go on. So actually, we have a problem this year with revenue and we haven't really talked about that yet. And then we have, but we have projects that go on into the last half of this year and on into 2021. And I guess I, I consider that part of the picture and would like more information about that as we try to come to some decisions here. Um, those are big ticket items. And maybe we can phase some of them. Maybe we can slow something down. I don't know. I, I don't have answers. I know that the prediction is that the uh economy is going to recover slowly and over some time. Um, I did have a specific question. I know that we have had a safety officer. And is that what you are now describing as a risk management person?
No.
Have we ever hired, I, I think it was two years ago, that person left and maybe, have we hired that position, fill that position at all yet?
So we've had two safety officers employed at the city. Uh, the most, the most recent one left um about six months ago, um, I believe. So we, we tried to recruit. It's a difficult position to hire. A lot of these folks are trained in a way that they can easily get a job in the private sector. And for what we offer, uh, it's usually trying to latch on to somebody at Fort Riley or somebody in the area looking for a little bit more stable uh work in terms of uh travel and and fluctuations in, in private budgets. But um, just to expand on your first comment, Commissioner. Just a reminder, when you look at the 17, 18 million dollars in bonds we just issued, all those projects took place three and four years ago. So when we talk about not doing a project this year or not doing a project next year, you're really talking about financially impacting the city in 2024. So yet you're right, you can pull the reins back and you can stop and we can delay things in the community. But that budget realization and benefit won't be for three or four years. There are projects that the commission decided on one year ago, two years ago, three years ago, that will be part of the 2021 budget because they'll be bonded. The ones that we did three years ago will likely be bonded in 2021. So that's when the debt service starts and the bond and interest fund kicks in. I do, and I have forecasted our, our debt service load in three to four years is, is going to rise. Um, we'll get a cash and debt management report out to you in the monthly, but when you look at that, you can see our temp notes are almost at the same level as our entire GO debt right now. Our GO debt's about 60 million and our temp notes in waiting, which are in the next two to three years gonna come online, is another 50 million. Now, our debt load is fine and when it, when you compare it to, you know, where we've been and you, you look at the capacity we still have as a, as a community, it's almost 100 million in capacity. So we're not bumping up any type of, of lid or maximum, but I just reiterate, debt-related projects, projects of significance that we are gonna debt finance over 10, 15 or 20 years, they're hard places to go for savings today or tomorrow. If you want to save money in 2023 or 2024, then yeah, throttle back.
Is there any, are we under any requirement to hire the safety officer? Are we, is anything saying we have to have that position?
It's part, no, in fact, it's part of the hiring freeze right now that we debate whether or not to go out for. I will tell you, a safety officer would have helped us in COVID-19 in our planning and our prep and our administration because between our office and all the department heads, we have spent an inordinate amount of time educating ourselves, developing plans, implementing those to reopen, closing. It is just, it has taken a lot of time away from individuals who had to get educated versus a safety officer could have spent virtually all their day working on COVID-19, not only closing down, but opening back up.
The other aspect of that I would just add is that the, um, you know, we've asked some other folks to step in to help fill some of that role, some of our safety folks uh at the fire department. And we still have a safety committee uh that helps work in, in some of those areas that have representatives from the department. So uh, we're still, we're still focusing on working safe. Uh, we just made a decision not to fill that position. And, and one, it's been very difficult, as Jason said, to recruit because uh I think we found maybe one other municipality in the state of Kansas that uh has a partial safety position for the city as a whole. Fire departments are very common. Police departments typically have a, a, a safety liaison officer, but, or safety training officer. Um, so that's part of what we've been up, up against, but that was a high priority for us uh at the time, and it's still important. And so uh it's something that eventually we do want to fill.
Is it possible, is it possible as our uh community has been uh scaled back to an end to uh somehow adjust our uh, our operation to uh mirror that, I, you know, uh, for this six-month period anyway? And then for even fall semester, we will not, we will not see 22 or 20,000 students here with all the accompanying uh faculty. Um, how, how are you adjusting to that reality?
So we provided some scenarios for 2020. Uh, we laid out a three to eight million dollar type of impact for 2020. We also showed you all um about 4 million in offsetting revenues, cuts, uh strategies to make up for that loss of revenue. Um, when we look at March's data at 15% lower than normal, comparatively speaking, we were a lot higher than other cities. April won't come till the end of June. We won't know that. May won't come till the end of July. So by the time you're about ready to adopt this budget, we may have at least an indicator of what COVID-19 has done to Manhattan and stay-at-home order. We won't have a good feel for how it's recovered. Clearly, there's more business being done today than April and May. But how much more? That's why we've gone to the 5% at a minimum impact for 21. We know there are industries that are not going to be at 100%. So I think we have covered where our plan is for 20. I'm, I'm still confident in the numbers we laid out at 4 million being very close, if not uh reflecting what we envision in losses. Um, you know, I'm still optimistic that we'll recover quicker. We won't lose as much in sales tax, but it's, it's just anybody's guess at this point as to just how vibrant we're going to be as a community. And that billion in sales and 1.3 whole factor that I mentioned earlier, they're up in the air and highly like, well, we know 2020 won't reach it, but how quick can we recover in 21 is the scenario we're trying to play out now.
Of course.
Thank you.
You know, Linda, I just wanted, I, and Jason run uh everyone. Um, for the safety officer, I think this, if this is something Jason you alluded to that would have helped to have during this COVID-19 crisis. When we look at the Spark um Task Force funding that might be coming to the county and as they look at incorporating the city and also using that for COVID expenses, they also said to plan ahead. So I would like for you to just put that on your radar as if that is something we can hire. Uh, this is probably the best time to do that and utilize some of those funds because it is taking a lot of your time and this person would be able to focus completely on that, that piece of it as far as a hire is concerned. And that is something we need to look at as far as just recovery funds is to plan forward with positions, uh, with whatever else we might have that might be related to COVID um in some format. But that's a, um, I digress a little bit, but I thought that's a different funding source we can look at for this. When, any comments?
Yes, I've got, I've got several. I, I think, you know, what you just mentioned, there's a good plan. I, I it seems strange to me. We've got several million dollars maybe coming down from the federal government, but we can't really put it where we want to. And it looks like people are inventing places to waste the money, to, to do things that I think will be crazy. If somebody goes out and stockpiles a zillion masks and stuffs them in a basement and the termites eat them. You know, that, that's just a waste of money, but it, but if it can be crafted so that you can say, look, we need a safety officer and we want to fund his salary and if it'll work according to rules, then by all means do it. And, and get as creative as possible with that money because it's a way to plug some of the holes. And, and I think that would be better use of it. Now, I assume based on the charts, there's no discussion of COLAs, step increases or any of that this year. So we're going along with what happened with the RCPD Law Board. Now, the Law Board, I think the, the final budget, they should have reduced the RCPD budget for this year. So is that figured in your calculations?
So we haven't, we haven't shown a, uh, we haven't got that data yet, but we haven't shown how it impacts our levy. But if they have actually decreased, it will free up property taxes out of the existing levy.
Yeah, there's a small decrease there, so that, that should be in your calculations. Now, my, my thoughts, I got like about 10 things here as usual, but uh, when it comes to revenues, you know, I, I understand that, you know, we're flat and, and part of what we've got to do is create a culture where, you know, if the Flint Hills Discovery Center knows their revenue is 700,000, then why are they planning on spending a million? You gotta redesign the culture to say, look, you know, this is our income. This is what I should be doing to stay within that income. If that means shortening hours, furloughing people, then do it. The only revenue source that I think would, would be substantial is a renewal of the economic development tax. And as I said before, I think we should basically push for that because and renew it like on a point four basis instead of point five so that the county has some flexibility. Do it citywide and then recraft how we're gonna use the money. Because I think your briefing just pretty much proved that the old economic development model is not working. It never did work because we collected this money and said we're gonna do economic development, but our sales tax flat. It was supposed to improve it. So we need to relook that, but everybody also needs to understand this, that that economic development tax, transferring money from it, did a lot of good things for debt service, property tax increases and infrastructure. So we need to take a real hard look at that, but clearly the data that you provided doesn't lend a lot of support to going back to the old economic development model. And I think a lot of cities have come to uh that basic uh conclusion at this point. Now, when it comes to cutting, you know, services, I've got a lot of emails. People are not happy about cutting parks and rec services, especially the pools and things like that. But I, I do think we should prioritize that. And one of the letters I got today basically said we'd be happy to pay a few cents more a year, as Jason put in his charts, to pay for the pools and things like that. Well, that tells me that if that is true, if that sentiment is true across the city, then they won't mind if we increase fees a little bit to cover that instead of going to property tax. And I say that because you had a chart there that showed that, you know, a good percentage of this comes from commercial real estate. And raising their property tax, they don't get a real benefit out of pools. You know, commercial real estate doesn't, so let's, let's raise the fees a little bit. Now, I'm not recommending exorbitant, you know, like 15 dollars to get into the pools. That would be crazy. That's out of everybody's price range. But can we, can we tweak that a little bit to make sense? And, and then let's see if people vote with their money. And I, and I mentioned before that, you know, maybe that means creating a, you know, a group pass for all these various uh facilities. So it's a, you know, annual, you know, a year long. I'm all for filling the vacancies. You talked about, you know, needing money for these uh folks. The vacancies in finance should probably be filled. I'm not so sure I would add any new positions. I think you gotta just hold the line on, on the, the new positions, but for sure, fill the vacancies because that's sort of a crazy. Transfers, I'm just against transfers from the water fund because I think we've got all kinds of CIP projects and, and storm projects involved there. And, and we get no gain by taking that money. What happens is that contributes to your point about delaying maintenance and improvement. So let's, let's keep that money that we're collecting in the enterprise fund and use it to fix the issues we have with stormwater and sewer and all those various things. I feel the same way about streets. I don't want to see any of the street maintenance money moved anywhere because that's a constant refrain. People, you know, want their streets fixed. They want potholes fixed. We want bridges repaired and right now, Public Works has got about everything that can be uh repaired, being repaired. You can't get from one end of the city to the other without a traffic jam. And that's maybe a plus, but you know, it's also a minus also because it, it hurts things, but uh I think we're doing good there. The citizens supported that street tax and they want the streets fixed, so let's keep the money focused on the water department and the streets. Now, the other funds, if we can, you know, move some money around there, I, I don't see that as being as, uh, being as critical. I still think we hire too many consultants. I don't trust them. I think uh the people we got closest to the task could probably do just as well. And, and if we spend too much money on that, and I saw on your list, you still had point two, three mills for the consultant for the strategic plan, and I don't much care for that. And I did talk with Jason about that. I, I think the, the city staff could probably write a very good strategic plan. I might consider the idea of having a consultant help you market it because, you know, my experience in business, we didn't have to do that. You know, if you were in charge, you just simply wrote your strategic plan and executed it. And there wasn't a problem of having to go out, consult with the entire population and get their points. So maybe reduce the cost of that significantly by just doing maybe the marketing piece of that. I think it's time to really take a hard look at outsourcing some things. And I know, you know, some companies outsource payroll. They outsource HR. I've talked in the past about outsourcing the pet licensing system. And, and we, we had some information from a company. I got their annual report yesterday, which I'll share with Eddie. And, and I, and I think there may be a way to do that. And again, we're, you know, a revenue source, pet licensing, you've got a huge bill, 600,000 for the animal shelter, and we're still only getting a few dollars in pet license fees. And uh, we need to crank that up. I mean, Linda Morris has mentioned, you know, how can we get more fees? Well, there's one I've been talking about for a while, and we have made some gains. And I think the animal shelter is, has made some great strides the past year. And, and their, the animals are turning over and the costs are going down and, and I really like what they're doing there. They're a good example of uh organizational effectiveness, I think, on, on, on what the manager down there uh has been doing. We need to take a real hard look at uh outside agencies. They're gonna come with their handout. And uh, we give away a million dollars a year to outside agencies. And if you really made a list of priorities, city services, where do outside agencies fit? And I know there'd be an argument on that, but, but some of these need to be maybe zeroed out and people aren't gonna like that. I'm not, I'm not saying zero out the emergency shelter. That would be a bad idea for the crisis center. But uh, we've been diverting, you know, mu- money from uh different funds to Manhattan Art Center. Is that critical at this point in time? When we're talking about cutting services across the city? And I know they're getting, you know, some 45,000 dollars and things like the Wolf House. And I know that's on the agenda later, but it's time to start thinking about that. You know, I've always said we need to prioritize the outside agencies. One through whatever. And if it's necessary to cut some of those off the bottom, uh, then we need to do it. And, and that's one way to, to stop some of the catastrophe that uh, you know, Jason's been talking about. The library's got six mills. Are, are they gonna continue with business as usual and just well? The library's got six mills, are they going to continue with business as usual and just, well, we'll spend six mills, are they going to tighten their belt? And we need to ask them that question bluntly. All right, because that's not even considered here, because Ron can't control it, you can't control it. But we can as a city commission by changing the charter ordinance. And we need to bluntly ask them that question, what are you going to do? To help us in this crisis right now with your library budget? And I use the library on a regular basis, I'm a fan of it, I check out the books, I get more than my property tax money back. And the books that I check out, because they give me a printout that tells me, which I think is great marketing on their part. But what can they do to, you know, trim things down just a little bit? And they did real well using electronic means here during the coronavirus, they helped people, you know, get books online, and I like that. But but I think they need to, you know, put their thinking hat on on what can we do? To reduce our mill levy impact so that it's not just, you know, other parts of the city that are tightening tightening up their belt. We had a goal this year of, you know, organization effectiveness. And I really, I think, you know, you gotta just crank up that culture. And it's a it's a tough one to get going in an organization, but we did that when I worked for, you know, Army Material Command. And the big buzzword is, you know, you cut out waste, but what is waste? And sometimes it's like Jason said, you know, you were doing an extra report for auditing that put a feather in your cap. But was it really essential? And what is the impact if you don't do that report? And the impact is you save money. And so you have to look at everything and and any savings, anything you can trim off. You know, can turn into a lot of money over time. And I always used an example, you know, years ago, if you bought a, you know, Coca-Cola, for instance. If you look at the size of the screw cap that was on there, it was reduced a millimeter. Because they figured out they had four threads on it, but it would seal just as good with three. So they reduced the size of the cap, well, that increased their revenues because they put less money in bottle caps. And they ended up making millions more. And that went back to the stockholders. And that's the kind of thing that has to be done at city level. But the people that can figure out which millimeter to shave are not in this room. It's the guys out there closest, the one operating the lawnmower, the one cutting the grass, the guy shoveling the asphalt. Those are the guys, we gotta tap into their knowledge, they can tell us which millimeter to shave off. And that'll translate into money, and later that should translate into step increases and everything else for the employees that come up with that, so. So I like our OE initiative, I'd like to see us really, really push that. And then, you know, the idea of projects that Linda mentioned. I I like the idea of long term, taking a look at slowing a couple of these down, because I, you know, if this budget crisis lasts a while. We got some issues. And I'm not saying, you know, I know we're we're committed to the parking garage, 12th Street. And the current phases of North Campus Corridor, but maybe those need to be backed off, you know, long term. So that we have a. More positive impact on what's going to take place in '22 and '23. And all of that, of course, if we can push the EcoDevo. Tax, but as a new tax citywide. And come up with some criteria and how that money is going to be used, it could have major impact on. The debt and infrastructure, especially if the economic development effort is less on giving companies money. And more on building the playing field, which is what North Campus Corridor does, in my mind, it builds a playing field for business. And EcoDevo monies were used to support some of that, which I think was good. And I think that's why we need to renew that tax. Now, if the taxpayers and voters go out and, you know, soundly defeat. A new economic development tax citywide for like point four. Then that basically tells us that we're going to have to raise property taxes. Or cut all the services all the way to the bone, and I think you just gotta push the issue on that. It needs to be done, we can't sit here and second guess it, I know that's one that everybody's, you know, concerned about. But, you know, we either make it happen or not, and and I felt that way in 2011, when I ran for office the first time. One of the issues was EcoDevo tax, and and my position was, let's use a third of it to drive down the debt. And that was a major change, and that passed, and we've done it over the past 10 years, and it has worked. It drove down the debt and it saved the taxpayers from point one to two mills every single year. And that needs to be emphasized. And we need to get that tax renewed, and then it'll get us over that bubble of the debt problem and the property tax increase problem. And if we can't sell it, then I guess the only other option is to cut services or raise the property tax. That's it.
Thanks, Wen. Yeah, so I'll I'll add a few extra comments to this, you know, I really want us to look closely at what the Spark Recovery Team is doing. And I've had a sent a few emails to Ron, and I've had a conversation, Tom Hawk, our Senator. Is on that Steering Committee, and Lyle Butler from the Chamber is also on the Executive Committee. And we also have Trent Armbrust in the Department of Farmers. So we have a few key individuals that we can look at as far as what that Spark money can be used for. And as they develop those guidelines, when we talk about technology, software. Hiring such as a safety officer, some of those broadband, they mentioned some of those things. That if we were to go to a shutdown phase again. Or or things that were impacted. When people had to all of a sudden work remotely, if we needed to upgrade those to be efficient, this is the time to do it, and this is the time to use that money. If they are thinking about $14 million coming to Riley County. And as Riley County Commissioners get together and we have our city-county-county meeting. We need to develop some plans on how to utilize that money. Because of COVID-19, we have lost a lot of revenue. And that's why the stimulus packages were put forth, so we can make up that lost revenue. It's not going to be at the same level, but it will take care of those. The impacts that strained our systems, and I think this is the time to try to utilize them so that in case it happens again. We don't want to be strained again, and I think we need to, this is the time, like I said, to capture those funds. I I I know our sales tax revenue is flat, and it's probably going to be flat and even decreased for a while. Because people are not spending money like we want them to, nor are they visiting or having conferences and conventions. And we don't know where athletics is going to be in the near future as far as spectators. But I'm also not inclined to look at raising property taxes right now. I think this is one year where I I'm not in favor of doing that. And I think a lot of people have been impacted, but a lot of, a lot of them can't. Handle another increase in property taxes, especially if it's for businesses. And that's where we're going to get it, capture that revenue source for the property taxes. I know we have some money in economic development funds, I don't know if that is something we can utilize for any of these initiatives. Or or even anything that's in our budget at this time, it's not going to. We have to use that at some point, if we're going to go back to taxpayers and ask for our sales tax renewal, and you still have. $8 million or five or six or however million dollars, and we're talking about how. All of these challenges we are having, and we don't have any way to be vibrant again, I think we need to start looking at how to fill those gaps. Whenever I invest money in infrastructure or in our city by raising taxes. I also want our property evaluations to go up to meet some of those expectations. When you invest, you also want to reap the rewards, and it seems as though we're not reaping the rewards anymore, we're just investing, investing and investing. So we kind of have to slow that down so we can capture a little bit more instead of just increasing our debt service each time. And we, like I said, we need to just think a little bit more differently and be more cautious. I want to invest in our community because that means we're growing, and I do see people coming back into our community. But I know we're going to have a decrease in enrollment, President Meyer said that this afternoon. And it's not looking that great for this year to plan for next year. So I'd rather err on caution, I do like the. The chart that you laid out for us, and I'd like to look at that a little bit closer. Social Services, Wen brought up social services, again, the Spark Recovery Task Force, I want them. I want to see how we can use some of those funds to help these individuals. Because if their needs have increased during those two or three months, then maybe we can fill those gaps, that's what this money is for. And as they visit organizations and plan on if they're the emergency shelter or the Flint Hills Bread Basket. If their needs have increased because of COVID-19, this money can be used for that. And maybe we don't have to increase our social services budget if those will be filled by that money coming in. So I think that discussion is still on the table, I'm not going to say. That we can't fund them at all, but there is a a some funds available now for us to at least think about funding some of those sources. Especially things such as the Emergency Health, Manhattan Emergency Shelter and such, that they can build for the future even. Because COVID-19 is going to have a long-term impact, that's already been designated, so those are things we can plan ahead for. I don't know if I've helped the discussion move forward much further than what I can, but the information I have in front of me right now. But I I am for the filling the gaps of the positions. In finance and maybe even hiring an assistant or two in human resources, I understand that piece of it. But software is going to be your biggest expense, and IT is going to be your biggest expense. So I'd rather try to find those, find a source for that type of funding right now.
I wanted to echo, I I like what you said, Mayor, about if we can. Take that, you know, COVID money that the federal government's down here and funnel it towards some of the outside agencies. Excellent suggestion, as long as it's legal and, you know, we research that and make sure that we don't get into trouble. Because I understand there's some auditing, we may have to pay the stuff back if you don't dot the i's and cross the t's. And I remember the the issue we had with the Douglas Center where we thought we had a deal. And then we found out there was a little hiccup legally at the state, not the federal government, so. Long as we research that, but man, that would that would go a long ways towards us solving a lot of our problems, if we can make that happen.
Mark?
Yeah, I just, yeah, the problem over the last few years is that the community is growing in size. But it's been had been going down in population, so there's fewer people to pay for more. City services and government and such like that, the I. Yeah, I I hate the idea of if we could. Think somehow, just like before, I suggested if we could. Property tax the businesses that were able to stay open and make make good money, but not the ones that didn't, if we could. Raise property taxes that much on homeowners, but not on businesses, especially the ones that were closed. I'd be in favor of of that somehow. It's just that. Yeah, the property taxes have stayed down because we've been propping it up with the EcoDevo money and helping things like that, so. But I'm not in favor of of raising the property tax, I just think it's. It it stinks for the city that property taxes have gone up so much the last couple of years, especially with the new schools coming on. Construction coming online, and so there's been this 10%. It seems like boost of of property taxes. And the city general fund hasn't gotten any of that, it seems like, and so it's it's just. We're just been in a bad position, and so. I'm I'd be, I've always thought it was a cop out when the when the state government would do this. Sweep of funds and take all the money from the Healing Arts Board and the dog licensing people and the hair barber people, the extra money. That they had accumulated through fees of their member users. But I I would be interested in in looking at at some money coming out of some of those funds, and if there's 30 of them. I don't, yeah, obviously, the we don't want to raid the storm sewer because we got a gazillion projects. The Storm Sewer Fund, we probably don't need to be raiding the sanitary sewer. But I think we're going to have to spend some of the EcoDevo money to fill some of this gap. Simply be if if two thirds of it could go to property tax reduction and debt reduction. That that seems logical, and I don't, we don't want to, obviously, don't want to eat all of our seed wheat. But it just doesn't seem like there's been. Much harvesting going on of of new and greater business, and I and I like the idea of investing that in the North Corridor area. So we want to, whatever parts we earmarked for that, and and I'll have to see the list of where all the money's going now and where we're committed and how much is left. To have a a really intelligent discussion about that. So I would say I would be in favor doing a little bit with some of the funds, raiding the funds a little bit. If we're losing 7,000, I mean, $7 million a year on Parks and Recreation stuff. Because there's 9,800 in in expenses. Well, maybe if we cut 5% of Parks and Rec expenses, that'd be $490,000 or something. That would be two thirds of or three quarters of a mill almost. They're just, because the problem is, is that I'm looking at the Parks and Recreation page you guys gave me. In my old age, I don't do any of those things anymore, and so I I don't go to the pools. I've been to go to Discovery Center for an event once or twice, I haven't been to the zoo since the kids became teenagers. So none of those things are a huge priority for me anymore, but I know every one of those agents out areas. Has very vocal constituents, and nobody wants their pet thing cut, and so that's where I I think. Little little something maybe out of some of those areas that are the biggest money losers for the city. It seems to make a certain amount of sense to me, and so I would like us to investigate that. Raid the funds a little bit and. And then, yeah, preferably not raise raise the property taxes anymore than we absolutely have to, but. This is a great opportunity to us to kind of decide what are the what are the what are the essential services that the city has to provide? And while parks is is pretty essential, and I don't want to cut out recreation because that's that's vital to. Children's happiness and adults' happiness who live through their kids' lives, so we can't cut that. But I think there's going to have to obviously be a multiple area of a little bit from here, so it doesn't hurt too much, a little bit from there, so it doesn't hurt too much. But I think we ought to be able to get to that point, and I don't know if we'll get all four of the new finance people approved or not, but. Obviously, if we're we're way behind and we don't want to, yeah, if it's hard enough already on people working there, we do need to help. Make that happen as best we can, but I know when they, I was talking to a banker several months ago about some bidding on one of the some project that they were going to do. And they commented about this terrible mishmash of city software. And nobody talks to anybody, and everybody has to enter stuff into two or three different platforms because it doesn't talk. It's like, yeah, that's that's madness and labor intensive, and we've got to do something about that to streamline that. And I it just amazes me that any software could be a million and a half dollars. But if it if it would save, yeah, allow us to not fill three or four spots because we don't need people re-entering everything six times. That would be that would be money well invested over time, but. So. That's my two cents worth, I'll let you guys wrap it up.
Well, more discussions to have, I'm sure, we'll get more information as we move forward too.
I I was gonna circle back and weigh in, I think there there was a. I mean, you had asked from us from some percentages and some direction, and I feel like we've asked you a lot of questions. Rather than giving a lot of guidance, but I wanted to be clear about where I was coming from. And that. I don't, I want, do you have an opportunity to pull up, Jason, pull up that. Chart that you had that you made today, the different percentages? So for, you mentioned you had talked to the different nine departments. Talked, kind of had an idea, so some feedback from you is appreciated, but. If if I'm looking at a zero property tax. I'm looking at columns F. Or E and EG and H. And. What? What that translates to is 1.35 million from city services cut or transfer, and when you say transfer. That this property tax increase is not, where does, on this chart, you don't have an increase of fees kind of in there, right?
Yeah, we could, that could be substituted for tax increases.
Okay, so it could be, there could be a small portion there. But that's where I'm looking, and from your perspective. I we heard from Wen, Wen doesn't, Commissioner Butler doesn't like to see the transfers, there could be some some others. So but what about from your perspective, talking to the departments? from your perspective, talking to the departments? Is there of, of course, the, the city services cut 2.7, if that's all, that's, that's the worst-case scenario. That's painful. Then the other two options on here are 1.3 and 2 million. What is your read of how detrimental, how to the bone, how far deep? And I think it goes, maybe you don't have a full answer on that, but it goes back to what Commissioner Butler said and what Mayor Reddy said about finding that. And even finding that, the individuals that know where the cuts could be made to find those savings are the ones that are on the ground there, deeper into it and know where they can find that millimeter difference, that type of savings in the, in the individual budgets of those departments to get to a level. But how impossible is it if we were at that G level? 50/50? If we had to, if we had to tip towards one, is it, is one easier or harder?
None of them are getting, you know, on the, the, cutting city services, you know, when we look at 31 million for general fund, 22 of its people. So we're going to get into people. We're also going to get into programs and services that, as Mark accurately described, there are groups of people that are very passionate about everything we do. Very passionate. We're going to ruffle those feathers. So you know, you guys and administration are in the enviable position to make just about anybody and all mad. And whatever decision you give us tonight, or whatever direction, you know, we're going to generate a scenario that somebody is could be a large group not very happy with.
Right.
So
Jason, what I'm, what I'm asking is not the political decision because of course there's going to be, there's going to be upset people that, there's no way around that if we're not raising. If we raise property taxes, there'll be upset people too. There's, we didn't get in this business to make everybody happy, I guess. But what, what, what I'm asking is more the, around the lines of the transfer, is there transfer, is there capacity in the transfer and fund balance? How detrimental would that be to pull from? I'm, I'm wondering. So we have these possibilities, but we don't have I don't, I need more direction about what the viability of that is. Is it viable to pull that much from the fund balance?
So A, to me, is a manageable response. Everybody shares in the burden. Our cutting of services is a million dollars, which is substantial. But we're also transferring close to a million and taxes are going up by a million. That to me, just from a management perspective, is manageable. I'm not sure it's manageable from yours perspective. Again, we'll get into the political side, but I do think the conversation is healthy here. And then I appreciate the conversation and the questions because there are ramifications to everything we do. And that's why I stressed the 1.2 million in increases puts us in a tough position out of the gate. If you want to chop up lost revenues and you want to talk about operational expenses and where those sources should come from, you can make arguments, obviously in certain areas, probably better than others. You know, our operational issues by which we have to sustain over time need a source of revenue, not only for this year, not only for next year, but for the next five. I, my blood pressure goes up when COVID-19 is talked about in terms of state money and federal money because it's not going to be here. It's not going to be here. It's going to be a one-time shot. I'm not supportive of hiring people with that money because you're going to come right back next year and have the same conversation of, do we keep that person on? Because it's not sustainable. Now, there might out there that can gap fill, but we're right back here next year. And this is, this is a conversation we
Jason, I was just going to say, to your point, I, I was coming into this position, you know, from, from the point of election. So COVID has not changed my position and that we've been out of balance in the way that we're not collecting the sales tax in the same way that was expected. We've had, we've been, we're not, we're out of balance in our budget. So there needed to be adjustments to be made regardless. So the COVID and the sustainability is, is maybe a way to kick the can down. I would like to see more long-term answers to that. And even the transfers and fund balance is probably just a Band-Aid for, for now.
The transfers, I will say, could give you an opportunity over a longer period of time to backfill a fund. The ED fund is a great example because we have used it. We've used it regularly for a variety of reasons over the last six, seven years. None of which have really been overly controversial or at a point where it's hurt us. But I will tell you, if it's not renewed this year, next year, or the year after, that source of revenue goes away. So if you want a scenario right now with EcoDevo and you tell me it's not going to renew, it runs out in 2027 based on all the money you have today. And the things you've used it for in the past. And that includes a $600,000 to $700,000 annual payment to retire the debt on a conference center that opened in 2012 that was financed in 2014. So there are just, there are all kinds of trade-offs. You take money out of the utilities, the water, storm sewer. You can make that money up over time and fill that gap today. So transfers have been kind of something we've looked at over time. I can understand you have 35,184,691 dollars in fund balances. At the same time, I'm telling you, your fund balance in the general fund is woefully inadequate. But you've got revenue in other streams that, you know, EcoDevo, I mean, what is the fund balance that you all desire? For 2021, for 2020, we budgeted over $8 million. But I can tell you a lot of that $8 million is committed in the out years. And if you want to use some of it for 2021, you're going to have to de-commit to some annual debt service payments in 2026 or 2027 or 2030 for that matter. You know, you, that's the way you can shift some of that money around to fill gaps today that then give you an opportunity in the future to advocate for, you know, a renewal. Or, you know, a water rate fund to increase from, instead of 3%, maybe we go to 4%. And you're talking pennies over time that actually add back up to what it is you're talking about transferring. Transferring is a lot of flexibility and it's viable. Don't get me wrong. But you, at some point, you have to replenish somewhere along the way.
So if, from, on that G column, the 50/50, what it would be for, I would like, if possible, to, to have, to give yourself and Ron an opportunity and the nine departments and, you know, as your staff to find a way that that works that isn't across the board. Across the board is, is in my, my way of doing it is kind of a, a little bit of a lazy way. I, I feel like we can do it more targeted and find that waste and empower people to take control over their budgets and and protect things that they see that are valuable and know that are valuable that we will never know from our perspective. But so that, that opportunity takes time and I don't want to run out of time before we have to put a budget in. So I'd like to try to get that as quickly as we could, if that's something that's possible, without having to do just across the board because I don't like that. I, there's probably ways to do it a little bit more targeted and strategic. That's that breakdown of those nine departments. If, if that 1.3 is viable, if it's, if it makes sense, then I, I will trust you on that. I'd like to see where that comes from and also, but that's easier, I think, to find out. And again, I, I came, I came to this commission with the sense of we had to, we had to do some housekeeping. It wasn't going to be fun. It wasn't going to be pretty. There was infrastructure that needs to be done that is never the cool stuff. It's all, we got stuff underground that nobody cares about until it doesn't work anymore that we got to fix. And we got budget issues that we got to take care of. So we can't just keep spending. And we got to realign. We've, we've hoped that the sales tax would increase. We hope that EcoDevo would give us this boost. We haven't seen a dramatic increase in jobs created over the last decade. We, where all of these factors were here when I was coming into the commission. Throw COVID on top of that, sure. But none of that, we can't blame all our budget and everything on COVID. This is, this has been baking for a while. And unfortunately, we have to clean it up and it's not going to be fun. But it's necessary. So we can, the hopeful side is I'd like to actually see us to be able to recruit great talent and get our staff the, the pay increases they deserve and to do all of the things that we can that we constantly say that we want to do but can never afford to do. Once we have our budget lined up, I feel like that's where our priority has to be in our staffing and expansion so we can grow those responsibly. But it's going to be ugly for a year at least to clean it up so we can really take care of our employees.
I appreciate the feedback, Aaron. That's, that's great direction. That gives us something to work with. I think it's in line with some other comments, but I, this, this calling out G and 50/50 gives us the type of direction I was looking for. Thank you.
Jason, I wanted to add one thing. Of course, I, I don't have a problem with transfers. Just wanted to limit it, you know, out of the water and the street fund. But we're, we're, what we're pushing for here is a zero mill levy increase, which still means a property tax increase. So, so if you take, you know, G, now if you add in there, it's just the increased validation. And that changes the numbers a little bit. You know, so it's not 50/50. There is going to be some because I'm for, you know, the flat mill levy. But I understand with, with appraisals going up, that means there is going to be a little bit of money there and that should be captured in the city budget because you've got some new buildings and things of that nature. So you can maybe, you know, you can maybe tweak that and then add a little column there on if we did increase fees, you know, how does that help us? And then, and then I do think we need to really consider that economic development tax and putting it on the November ballot.
What, but what is the, is the county officially going to move forward with their renewal of their, the sales tax this fall? Has that become official yet?
I don't believe so. I think the, there's just been some discussion. There's been some discussion that they were planning to move forward. As the longer COVID has been here, I think there's some second thoughts to that. But to my knowledge, they've not taken any official action to put the anything on the ballot.
About what would be the drop dead deadline for them to decide?
Or either one of us, I believe it's early August.
And of course, I don't know if you were in on the discussion. My, we had this discussion with the county. You know, our thoughts were, you know, if we renewed the current one with a, we'd have another argument or discussion, I guess, on how we would spend the money, but renew it at 0.4, not 0.5. And then that would allow the county to do a road and bridge tax of 0.1. It wouldn't change the tax rate in the county. Wouldn't change the tax rate in the city should the county do that. And it would increase the tax rate on the Pot County side of the city, you know, clearly. But what's interesting there is, you know, which businesses did well during this COVID? They're sitting over there on the Pot County side. And, and, and so, you know, we're, we're missing out on that revenue. And then that's a big increase of instead of 30 million, it's going to push 40. And so that, that really takes care of the revenue thing. I think with a little bit of management, we can accomplish what Aaron was saying, was drive down this property tax increase and still do everything. But we've got to do a good job of selling that to the voters. So that they understand that, you know, out of all the solutions, that is really the best one on the table right now.
Yeah, it's a shame that the county commissioners kind of dismissed that idea without really even pondering it, seemed like, the 0.4 and the 0.1. But if they're not going to move forward, I think we kind of shelved the idea of, of the city tax when they said, oh yeah, we're going to renew the county. But if they're kind of pondering, yeah, not, they're going to kind of go cold feet on us or wait on it. Then that's something that we ought to really consider. And I don't know what the, what the pulse of the community thinks of of the economic development, sales tax renewal thing. But if you could sell it, yeah, as a slightly less tax than what you've got and it's going to save the day and get their pools open for next summer and and various other things that they missed out on this year because of budgetary restraints. I think that would be a reasonably easily, easy sell, maybe.
Yes. Hi. I was wondering, Jason, you told us, I think at the last meeting, one or first, the last or the meeting before, what the current amount of unobligated money in the Economic Development Fund is. What is that? Or you can let us know.
So there's a cash balance of $8 million, but in terms of unexpended dollars in the 2020 budget, it's just over 4 million.
So that's unobligated?
It's unexpended. So for that calendar year, there is $4 million. Now, we're going to give you an EcoDevo renew, an update. And we're going to be able to show you not only that cash, but the cash coming in through 2022 and the KSUIC building repayment and what you've done over the last couple of years. And if we run out some payments, that's my comment of you do run out of EcoDevo dollars based on what you have today and what's anticipated for revenues over the next three years. And in 2030 some, because of the debt payments you've committed to, projects you've committed to, and you run it all out and you continue to pay that $600,000, $700,000 in Conference Center. And you pay the chamber 350K more a year. I mean, those things just add up and you can only run it out so far. And then it stops. So it's, it's not to say you can't commit that money. But what you're going to do on the backside of this thing is start dropping off payments. And, and that, that date gets closer to when you run out of them.
I think it's, I think it's important that we know how much is quote uncommitted. When you say it is unexpended, that means it's, the money's in there. But every time we talk about economic development, you say, oh, but that's committed. So I'm after how much is not committed.
And, and that's the scenario. The Conference Center, there's no obligation on an annual basis for that $600,000 to come out. It's just something we do so we don't raise the mill levy. And my question to you is, can you predict what every commission is going to do now for the next seven years, eight years, nine years, 10 years, when it comes to that payment? If next year they decide, nope, roll it into bond and interest, raise the mill levy to pay for it, then I'll tell you, you've got $6 million sitting around. But if you're going to pay for that debt over that 10-year period, I'm going to tell you, you got zero. So that's why it fluctuates. Is that committed or is it not? Is it committed to the chamber for the next five years, 10 years? Those are annual decisions you all make with that money. And that's why it's very difficult to tell you just exactly what you have. You want to know how much money, if you could spend it all today, that isn't committed into a project that's ran out 10 years, it's about that $4 million, $5 million mark. But if you want to honor all your past obligations in the future, you've essentially run out of money.
To Jason's point, you know, the Conference Center is a good example because the original forecast was to spend about a million and a half dollars in economic development funds for the original Conference Center. And then the rest of it was going to be absorbed over time through the growth of experiences that occurred there in our bond and interest fund, either through increased sales taxes and that, that sort of thing. But every, every budget year, when you see the mill levy impact, the tendency has been to not increase the mill levy in the bond and interest fund to accommodate that plan, but to supplant it with economic development funds instead. So which is your prerogative?
So which is your prerogative? No, no question about it. But those, those annual decisions that become discretionary, you know, they, they aren't firmly pledged. They're not like a Tiff district where they're set aside going in to make those debt service payments that nobody can touch because that's, that's guaranteed to go to pay off that debt. So those kind of provisions weren't made originally, and that gets back to some of our, our Kansas budget laws too, that, that doesn't necessarily allow that. But those are the, what's discretionary and, and again, when you, when you have a forecast that you've planned on accomplishing and, and you interrupt that forecast, and, and many times for good reasons. That just leaves you a hole out there that you gotta plug later down the road. And, and hope for either some additional revenue or a renewal of a tax or something else to take that place. In the expansion, you recall, that's kind of a quite a bit of a complicated, now we're we'll temp note that for a period of time, but we pledged an increase in the transient guest tax. Well, that's not generating much money for us right now. So those are, those are just some of those issues you run into, all the more reasons that we should have better reserves when we are doing some of that. So just, just some thoughts.
I would, I would support the idea of increasing, looking at increasing fees. We have a lot of visitors here for our recreation programs and when we look at it for next year, I think we have to take a look at that more seriously. And I, it's not that I want to. I love having two dollars slim nights. But some things just aren't practical either in this day and age. So that has to be on the table. I would like to see a, a project status chart for the rest of 2020. And then one that you use to project into 2021. As we look at some of these, they are bigger ticket items and how, how can we be looking at the budget without having the benefit of some of that information? Because our infrastructure costs are so high. And, and you know, when I look at the million dollars or the city had to spend to fix the Hayes Drive stormwater sewer and we have these things that just go haywire that nobody can really predict. And while we're trying to what do you call it? Just replace some of that old or historic sewer and water lines. It's slow compared to what, you know, a big million dollar break can do to the budget. So it's really tough. I think that I would, I don't know. I, I need to think some more about the economic development sales tax. Other than just, I want to hold the budget as, as low as we can. And my original thinking was that to shoot for a zero percent mill levy increase. And that's what I'd still like to pursue. And I can tinker with G or tinker with another one or two of those columns, but as we consider those, I, I wanna be reasonable too. And so we have more to hear on the, on the budget. We have three more, is that right? Three more updates from you? Because each time we focus on one piece and we don't talk about it as a whole, the budget as a whole. So as we go along, we'll all be better informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. We didn't get a big budget book. I don't know if we will or not this time. And I don't know if it's necessary or not. But in past budget discussions, there was that one year, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, when we did do one-third property tax, one-third TGT and one-third EcoDevo for the bond and interest, I think. And you said transient guest tax is going to be low. Do you know about how much we're going to be expecting from transient guest tax this year?
Really hard to predict. I think we indicated that we would probably end up about 50%. It's about as close as we are right now. And, and we'll know more certainly as time goes on. You know, the, the, the challenge is with most of our revenue streams, most of our significant revenue streams, they're all delayed. So, you know, we, we are passing a budget in August that's really reflective of revenue through May.
May or June, yeah. That's what I thought. And if it was supposed, if it was going to be at 100%, was it budgeted for 1.2 million?
Two million. I think two million was the total, total budget. The, I think the chamber contract was 1.2.
Okay. And then it was divided into the others. Okay. And you're thinking?
Our hotel, our hotel industry is about 27 million in total and their transient guest tax rate is seven and a half percent.
All right. Well, that's gonna make a huge impact either way. I don't mind, I mean, I'm gonna leave that to you as to where you wanna pull the funds from or decrease services. I think you are best at understanding what to do in those capacities or where to increase fees. And we will probably have those discussions about fees and such. Even in the past, when we increased our mill, it was very negligible in my opinion. It was point eight or point three and such. But this time with even worse revenue as far as sales tax and property tax, it's harder to plan for next year. But I, I will have to say I'm, I don't want a mill levy increase. Property evaluations will increase, people's property taxes will increase in some areas and in some areas they won't. But people will generally think we increase their mill levy anyway, or we increase their property taxes anyway. What I feel when I, when I go out and about is I don't see people having a confidence enough to go and spend money yet. But I also don't wanna, that's gonna impact our businesses, of course. But I also feel there's this extra burden from property taxes, especially for businesses, which is the one where we'll be collecting the most money from for property taxes. So that's my only take on this as far as property taxes. Everything else, we need to do a deeper dive and have more discussions about how that's gonna look. It's not gonna be fun cutting anything, but I don't think we're gonna, I think the state is probably gonna be doing the same thing across the, all of their services they're gonna be looking at. I don't think there's any best solutions at this, but to me, it's going to be a, a tough year and hopefully we can get some of those capacity back to where the consultants see us being in our hires, but I'd rather just fill positions right now that were vacated. And, and we'll have more discussions. We're not done yet. With that, are we ready to move on to the second item or should we have more discussion? We probably gave you more than you can handle on that one alone.
We appreciate the feedback.
Thank you, Ron. And Jason, thanks for presenting. The next item tonight and last item is to review the resolution, the emergency resolution we put in place when we decided to move on to Zoom meetings and such. Ron, do you want us to guide us through this and we'll make some discussions or decisions as we move forward?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we passed an emergency resolution back on March 31st and it is set to expire June 30th and has a, a number of operating protocols for how we were gonna proceed, gave me, gave me some additional authority and, and some expenditure approvals as well as talked about how we were going to hold public meetings. And so part of that is, if you have the next slide. So again, this was to, to give us how we might operate temporarily in our agendas and operations, enabling the commission to act quickly if necessary and and certainly transition us to the Zoom world, if you will, which we've all become way too familiar with. And just as a sideline, we did have some technology expenses that I think we'll be able to recover in that regard from they're not huge dollars, but in, in making that transformation, we did encompass some costs and it'll be good to get some of that, that back as well. We changed our ordinance to go with one reading instead of our traditional pack, practice of two unless commissioners wanted to consider more than one for a specific type of ordinance, if you will. We also really made an adjustment to the ability to, for someone to give live public comment. And so it suspended the ability to give real-time public comment. And it did require our citizens to be able to put those questions or comments in advance to you that obviously we've gotten some over the past few couple of months, but haven't gotten a lot. And I don't believe there were any tonight either. So as we move forward, again, that's somewhat of a impediment to participation, at least as we've, as we're accustomed to in our normal operations. It expressly authorizes us to meet remotely and set some standards for how we meet and certainly what we needed to do to be able to follow the Kansas Open Meeting Act at all times. Gave me the authority to cancel any city meeting or board meeting that we deem necessary in lieu of the COVID-19 experience. And increased my purchasing authority to from 20,000 to 75,000, also increased department heads from 10 to 25 that during this period of time. And we've been reporting those to you, that differentiation and, and publishing on our website. It also allows for suspension of our normal procurement process. We've had that, it kind of treats our purchases like I've had in an emergency. So this has certainly been an emergency, but we've still been trying to keeping our ability to get quotes and other aspects during that period of time. And then the duration, which I spoke to a little bit earlier, was originally scheduled to expire at the end of June. And certainly the commission has that opportunity to go back to meeting in real time or do you want to expand that out a little longer even? So again, we, we've and maybe it was an error on my part, but we had thought that our safety protocols might allow us to be have the city hall open to the public by next week. And we're not comfortable with that quite yet with our regular daily protocol for being able to accomplish that. We do think we can accomplish some opening the building up for some meetings if we want to. And then in fact, we've allowed, I've allowed the law board to be able to hold their June 15th public hearing on their budget. I thought that was a pretty important item for public comment. And so I've allowed them to use it. We're just gonna open the building up to the public during that time period and we have some protocols in place that they're very willing to assist with, which is, was important. So we also had previously advertised a public hearing to occur in the commission room and that's for the 16th. We can still do that whether you all want to meet back in person yet at that location, or if you'd rather continue things, we would open up the, the building for that person. It's a public hearing on a, on a easement vacation and dedicated a new easement out in the tech park. There's a company that bought the old brewery that would like to expand, actually have a building permit pending till we can, they can, they need to move part of this, I believe it's a sanitary sewer line so that they can expand into that area. So it's something that we'd already rescheduled it from original earlier date. And so again, we, we don't have, you don't have to come back and meet in person, but I wanted to have some discussion about some of your thoughts about that. And certainly we have protocols in place for being able to accommodate that, if that's something you'd like to do. And so if you could give us some feedback on that, I would appreciate it. It still might be possible for some folks to remotely participate while the rest of the body met in person along with some of the staff. I've talked about that with some of our staff as well. So with that, I think, again, the options moving forward are to continue or have that June 16th meeting in person. And if we do at that meeting, we'll need to rescind that, that resolution. And then also determine how we wanna proceed in the future. So again, whether or not we wanna leave some of those provisions in place that we've established. And we had talked, as you know, we had talked about some of those provisions changing anyway, even prior to COVID. And so I know we've worked on some of those components for your consideration as well. So any feedback you can give us on, on that would greatly be appreciated.
Thanks, Ron. Could you go back to that slide right before this? You had protocols or something? Right before, yeah. So are these the protocols you would put in place if we were to be back in person?
Yes. So this would be, as you remember, when we met there during, when we were first entering into the situation, we were able to set the room up for social distancing. We can also use some of the foyer area for that and, and certainly could limit the access to the building and, and provide information for folks to be able to do that. So there sees, you see some of the challenges that we have, but we could accommodate 62 folks and still have good social distancing in that location. We would also certainly be able to provide and strongly encourage folks to, to wear masks.
And the restrooms and everything are there? Okay. Thank you for bringing this up for discussion this evening. Personally, I'm not ready to go back into in-person meetings. If other commissioners choose to move back into in-person meetings, that would be okay with me. I would probably still be online till I get, get myself to go ahead and do that. So I think that should be maybe a hybrid format if, if we could do both. Cause I think that's allowed by, by statutes that you can still participate even if you're not physically present, whether it's by phone or even by video or something like that. So I think that option's still open for me. I like the guidelines you put forth. Since we are not necessarily, we're not in this stay-at-home arena anymore, I don't mind removing some of those provisions. I've always felt it beneficial to have more than one reading. I think I'm comfortable going back to two readings. I'm comfortable going back to our work sessions and our legislative sessions. And if, if the commission chooses to have the in-person meetings, of course, public comment would be live at that point, which is something I prefer. But if everybody decides to stay online, we can still do the format we've been using. Because I think that's been effective for the most part. We're all getting the emails. We're all able to read the communications and such. And the spending authority, we can go back to the way it was and the emergency funding authority, we can go back to the way it was before the pandemic took place. But I'll open it up for commissioner comments and questions.
Mayor, Linda Morris. Hi. I like the idea of even combining for having less bold lines between work sessions and regular sessions. I don't think we have, that's a historic format. I'm not sure we still have to do that. And I know we've been blurring the lines occasionally as issues have arisen, but that's how you've been scheduling it. So that doesn't have to continue. But I appreciate the two readings and I realize what I'm saying is more burdensome for staff and how much easier it must have been just doing one during, but it was, we approved that for the emergency part of the COVID when our structures were needed to be more efficient or slimmed down. But I, the part about having two readings is that we get five days or so to review an agenda item. And then when it comes back a second time, we've had
And then when it comes back a second time, we've had usually a two-week period and it's more, and it also helps the public have, helps have more time to think about it. We don't hear a lot from the public on those, which is, you know, testament to the city administration and the process that we have. But I also don't want the public to think that we're ever trying to pull something on them, over on them by only five days to respond. And so I like the idea of the two readings. I still regret, I guess, the lack of public comment over these last three months. I think we have proceeded, there haven't been a lot of public comments, our community doesn't have as many people in it, they're thinking about the virus or other things, sheltering at home. There are lots of things to think about besides what's on the city agenda. But we have historically committed to public comment here in Manhattan and I want to continue that in every way we can. I don't want to shut that down. Regarding to virtual meetings during the pandemic period, that's certainly important. I do have some concern about the, if that, if the virus returns this fall, as all of the science people are predicting. So we may be revisiting this resolution, Ron, for another time. But I, I'm really tired of Zoom meetings. I think a lot of us are, but I have felt safe at home and I probably would like to continue to stay home through June and probably in July, assuming the cases are minimal. We could, I would resume in July, but I'm happy to live with our June 30 termination date on in-person meetings. But I support blended too. I think if a commissioner wants to not participate, okay, you know, we can accommodate them with an electronic connection. I don't know about what that means for the future. I don't really ever want to go to totally virtual meetings indefinitely. Takes the connection with the public out of it. Zoom does not accommodate evidently from what we've been told, public comments. So whatever, maybe we can find another application or app that would support, if we ever have to do this again, that would support public comment. To me, that is so important. Increasing your purchasing authority, I think that was important for the period of emergency. I think we might want to have a separate conversation about the future or whether to do that indefinitely, whether to change it, you know, we went from 25 to maybe 50,000 or something. And then suspending the normal procurement process, I think during an emergency, that is appropriate. I'm not sure about long-term. I think we need some structure with regard to, you may not always be city manager or something, you know, and so I want to look to the future also. And I'm glad you're allowing the law board to meet there so that more members of the public can attend because at the county office building, the public, there are enough staff, board members and staff members there that there's not much chance for the public to get in the door. So that would be important. With regard to the public hearing on the 16th, we can, you have the building, the commission room open for that public hearing and then some of us are going to be on Zoom. And that kind of blended meeting is acceptable, right?
Yes, so that would be, that would be the intent, you know, the commission would not have to be in the meeting, they just need to be able to communicate and hear the public hearing and we would, you know, it's pretty unlikely that there will be. I mean, this is not a controversial type thing that really only impacts the landowner. It's just an easement vacation. So I wouldn't anticipate there would be, but that's, that would be the plan to accommodate them would be at the building.
Okay. All right, thank you. Well, that, the current resolution functions until June 30th. So yes, I mean, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
All right. To keep it simple, Ron, it sounds like, you know, to me, the solution here is just leave the resolution in place till June 30th. It'll expire, as we said. Have face-to-face meetings resume July the 7th. Go ahead and do that open hearing so we'll have a blended meeting if somebody wants to, wants to talk on that. And then have the staff prepare a new resolution if we want to change some of the structure that was in that original one that expires June 30th, like especially the spending rooms. And that's where I am on it.
Since the city was in the, led the way with having the Zoom meetings to start with, I would like us to lead the way in kind of getting back to normal and having the in-person meetings as soon as possible. I would be fine with going next week already, but it just seems like a pain to extend. Yeah, I'd say let it expire also, but I would be ready to start meeting in person right away next week here. When it comes to the two reading versus one reading, yeah, the two readings, a lot of people don't hear about items on the agenda till they're reported in the news after the first reading and then they get excited and have an opinion suddenly and want to weigh in the next time. But by then it's on the consent agenda and it's a rubber stamp deal. And so it's really, it's good and it's bad. It doesn't really give, it gives them a little opportunity to read the, to weigh in on it, but it's really almost after the fact. And so one reading versus two, I don't really think it makes a whole lot of difference. So I can go either way on that. I like the idea of streamlining government and not making people wait that extra two weeks to actually, since it gets approved, it's like, okay, move forward with whatever it was that you needed voted on instead of making them wait two more weeks before they can kind of move forward. So I think I'd probably go with, I'm going to continue with the one reading, but I don't, I'm not going to die on that sword. And so, yeah, I would vote to keep Ron's spending authority and the department head authority at the higher levels, but pretty much most of the rest of the stuff, let it expire. And I didn't think anything in there was, yeah, a lot of that stuff was more emergency-based and I would like us to get out of emergency mode as soon as possible and sort of seem more normal so that other people will see, oh, things are getting back to normal. I can leave the house, I can go out to dinner, I can get on with my life. Because I think that is the next challenge is people feeling comfortable getting out. And I think that was a way for us to lead the way a little bit because the numbers keep coming down. And so let's, let's go ahead and let people know that it's time to get out and start doing stuff. Appreciate that.
I agree with everybody. I will only add that if there is another, or when there is another resolution drafted, that we really do a, we got to find a way to incorporate live comments somehow. I don't know if it's, it just doesn't feel right. Well, I know this was an emergency, but now that we have some time to plan, I would hope that we can, it doesn't feel right to not have the public involved in the government process in a way that is a little bit more localized. So anyway, that's all I'll say. I agree with everybody else. It's already been said.
So probably let it expire is what I'm hearing.
Yes, so I appreciate the feedback. That's very helpful. And as of right now, you know, we also are looking at, so the next three meetings, next week's legislative meeting and then two work sessions, we are tentatively planning on having a work session on June 30th, which is a fifth Tuesday. So we would plan to have all of those virtually still. So I will tell you that even with it expiring, some of the boards, like the planning board, I know they, and I think the BZA have already had to advertise, you have to advertise longer for some of those public hearings. So they are, I know their first meeting in July is already planned to be virtual. So even though they haven't, would be back, they're going to continue to be virtual because of they've, those public hearings have already been advertised to be virtual. So we're working through some of those issues as well. But I appreciate the feedback and that's very helpful.
So that brings up a good point, Ron. Some of our advisory boards may have citizens that may be older or may have different types of health concerns. Can they opt out and still be virtual as needed?
Yeah, I, we've talked about having some, even, even though the expires, about potentially having some transition capabilities and, you know, it is possible for folks to participate remotely. We can, obviously, the technology's been enhanced to be able to do that. And so unless Katie can tell me something different, I think that can still occur and certainly we can accommodate. And some of this will be with our staff liaisons and myself with you all, our staff and working, educating you and training with some of our protocols that will be in place come July 1.
Okay, thank you. And I'm kind of lost track on my days and dates. We have a military thing on June 12th, then we have intergovernmental next Monday.
It's the 22nd, I believe. Maybe it's the, yes, the 22nd is the intergovernmental. So it's a week from Monday.
And then we have city, county, county.
Yes, that is also being planned. And I think the, at least that one subject matter that I'm understanding is discussion of the potential connection of the Keats sanitary sewer to the city sewer system.
All right, thank you. I just wanted the public to know as well as our commissioners so we can put it on our calendar. All right, is there anything else, commissioners or city staff? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.